Well, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
And, hi. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jeff Delacruz's American government, is it American government or, okay, from Pacheco High School? Is that correct? Okay? And I see the audience is full tonight, and thank you for coming. Please come back. And if any one of the five of us, the city manager or the city attorney can do anything for you, please let us know, and thank you for coming, and please come back again. So with that, could I please have Jim Garrison come forward from United Methodist Church for the opening prayer?
I'd like to invite everyone to the many church services that are happening on this Easter, and glad to have the students here taking interest in government, or at least an interest in improving their government grades. And let us pray. Lord our God, on this April Fool's Day, we ask that nothing here would be foolish, Lord, but instead we would be delightfully surprised by the wonderful ideas that others bring, and would help us to be alert for those. We'll thank you for the opportunity to celebrate the different things that are happening in our community. We ask for your blessing now upon these deliberations between our community members and our leaders, that good ideas may come forth and good decisions be made, and that you would use these proceedings to better our community. Lord, we ask for your prosperity upon our families, our businesses, our schools, and we ask that you would guide these meetings, that any things that can be done here to move it along in that direction, the good decisions will be made. And we give you thanks. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of April 1st, 2015. Chief, would you lead us in the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Maloney, roll call, please.
Furia.
Here.
Lewis. Silvera.
Present.
Stonegrove.
Here.
Valta. Here. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silvera.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Mrs. Stonegrove.
Second.
Motion by Silvera, second by Stonegrove, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Okay? Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Hello, Martha Furia, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce and 30-year Los Banos resident. The Los Banos Chamber has had a bustling spring. We are currently getting ready to celebrate our first event of the season, our annual Downtown Spring Street Fair. We have over ninety vendors slated to attend, and that includes food vendors of all kinds. You can get tri-tip and baked beans, funnel cakes, jerky and corn nuts, tamales and tacos, kettle corn and shaved ice. We'll also have Black Bear out on Sixth Street featuring their yummy cobblers and pies. Our Los Banos Lions Club will be out with their mobile vision unit, as well as the Delta Blood Bank, and they'll be holding our Los Banos Chamber of Commerce blood drive. We have something for everyone, including pony rides for the kids. JC's Starstruck Entertainment will keep it all going with music and entertainment from local dance and fitness programs, and our own CrossFit Valley View will be sponsoring the first responders competition. There's still time to participate as a vendor with your art or craft to stop by or give us a call. March brought us nine new members to our chamber. We welcomed Sandoval bail bonds with a ribbon cutting on the 26th, and we will be celebrating the membership of LB Steakhouse tomorrow with a ribbon cutting at 1:00. Spacetail Cricket Wireless also joined us, and they will hold their ribbon cutting on Thursday, the 16th of April. Just around the corner is our annual Merced County Spring Fair, beginning on April 29th and running through May 3rd. Your Los Banos Chamber of Commerce will once again be found near the midway with our annual beer booth, and we hope you will come and visit us at the fair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else you'd like to speak at the public forum?
Eric Lemond, resident of Los Banos, employer of Republic Services. I just wanted to give everybody a brief breakdown about recycling, and there was a lot of questions and concerns during the cleanup that we had over the weekend, which was quite successful. Los Banos has a leader in curbside recycling in Merced County. Plastic bags of any kind are not allowed in the blue recycler or green waste carts. This includes grocery bags, vegetable bags, any color trash bags such as kitchen or yard. Recycle must be placed loose in the cart. No clothing or fabric items of any kind, blankets, luggage, seat cushions, shoes, etc. Hard plastic such as plastic bowls, storage containers, toys are not accepted and are trash only. Oil is collected in a sealed container with regular collection, up to two gallons a week. Oil filters placed in a Ziploc-style bag also accepted. I encourage residents to recycle oil and automotive fluids with auto parts stores like Walmart in town. They accept up to five gallons at a time. No electronic waste such as TV, computers, or anything with a cord can be placed in the recycler or the trash. Billy Wright Landfill will accept many of these items, and you can contact them at Yogurt and frozen food containers come up often. I often tell residents to dispose of them in the trash, not to recycle. I tell residents not to rely on the number of, on the item. Plastic number six is styrofoam products, styrofoam products, and is not accepted in our program. Plastic that comes in the form of a bottle or a jug, such as a soda, detergent, shampoo, ketchup, are only forms of plastic accepted. Most are number one and number two. Cardboard, mail, newspaper, office paper, magazines are all accepted. Shredded paper can only be recycled if placed in a brown paper bag and stapled closed clothes. If it is in plastic, it must go in the trash only. Loose shred papers discouraged, as it can blow in the wind. We have two free cleanup days, which is one that just passed on March 27th, and we have one that's coming up, I will address later. One in the spring and one in the fall, where residents can dispose of items that don't fit into their carts. I encourage residents to open their water bills, as a water bill, as we place newsletters in them periodically with important information regarding the programs. For residential rentals, call 826-0231, or for rolloff services as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the recycling is very successful. I saw cars around it, block after block after block. Did you finish at 2:00?
No, I'm at 2:45.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Williams, resident of Los Banos and executive director of Habitat for Humanity, Westside Merced County. I'm here today for many reasons, one of which is to let you guys know about the Women Build Event that we have in May. May 8th and 9th, it's a two-day event this year, starting at 9:00 a.m., we'll be doing women build projects for six hours each day, and it's where we attract, we're hoping for at least fifty women this year, to bring together, basically, the event is inspired by the fact that women and children tend to be the biggest victims of low-income housing and poverty housing, and so we're trying to kind of bring light to that. It's Mother's Day weekend, so it's a national event that we do with Habitat International. So if you're interested, call us. My number is 509-9026, or you can visit our website at habitatwestside.org. But it's for all the women in the room, sixteen years and up, and all of you guys who have women in your lives, encourage them to come out, too. It's a pretty empowering event. We get to use power tools and all kinds of fun stuff. The other event that we have coming up that we'd love for you guys to attend is on April 18th, same day as the street fair. We're going to be having an open house at our 537 M Street House. We'll be finishing it up there and celebrating a home dedication for Mary Tingler and her family. And we actually, so the open house is from 10:00 to 2:00, but we have, the home dedication is at 1:00 p.m. So it's just right around the corner from Main Street, and we've been putting a lot of hard work into that, the family has as well, and some of the folks in this room have done work on that house. Deborah is one of them. And so I would love to see you guys out there if you can make it for the 1:00 ceremony. Thank you so much.
Would you send us a reminder, too?
I will.
Thank you.
And there'll be flyers outside.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I wanted to ask the women's building event for May 8th and 9th, where's the location?
So we'll be meeting at the-
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Come on up.
The, we'll be meeting at the M Street address, the 537 M Street, and going from there.
Any more questions, Mrs. Lewis?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we'll go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And Director Maloney, we have tonight.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers, 152343 through 152585, in the amount of $663,664.52. Street closure request from the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce to hold the annual Downtown Spring Street Fair on Saturday, April 18th, 2015, from 5:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the downtown area, to close Sixth Street between K Street to H Street, J Street between Fifth and Sixth Street, with the streets at Seventh and K, Seventh and J Street, Seventh and I Street, Fifth and J Street, and Fifth Street and I Street, blocked off to vehicle traffic and to allow vendors to be set up in the center of each street. City Council Resolution Number 5647, authorizing the city manager to execute a hold harmless agreement between the City of Los Banos and the Los Banos Oddfellows for the purpose of securing a community banner across Sixth Street in downtown Los Banos. City Council Resolution Number 5648, accepting the grant deed and dedication from Stone Creek Properties for Olivera Park located west of Ortega Lita Road and south of Curdoza Road, APN number 430060013. City Council Resolution Number 5649, accepting a grant of easement from California Dairies, generally located near Pacheco Boulevard and 13th Street, APN number 026280005 and The items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mr. Furia?
I'd ask that item be removed so that council can vote on it, and I can recuse as my wife works for the Chamber of Commerce, as it would be a conflict of interest.
Okay. Mr. Silvera?
If there are no other further removals, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus item B.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
It's been motioned by Silvera, second by Lewis, to approve the consent agenda as stated, minus item B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, Mr. Furia?
I think I'm, you can stay.
You can stay?
But I can't vote.
Okay. Your attorney says you can stay, you can stay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item B of the consent agenda.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Silvera, second by Lewis, to approve item B as previously read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Right. Yes, sir.
If I could take a moment, as a teacher, and the opportunity to educate the students, the reason I had to recuse myself, as my wife works for the Chamber of Commerce, she was here just a moment ago, anything that could affect the financial well-being or benefit to the Chamber of Commerce affects my wife's and therefore my financial well-being, and therefore I'm not allowed to vote on it, and that's why I had to recuse myself from the vote.
Thank you. Let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public meeting, hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of the amendment to the development agreement relative to the villages at Stone Creek 2A and 3, generally located in the southwest quadrant of the city of Los Banos, west of Badger Flat Road, north of Pioneer Road, and south of Walmart Shopping Center. Item 7A1, ordinance number 1127, approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement relative to the development known as the villages at Stone Creek 2A and 3, making certain findings related thereto, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement on behalf of the city. And this is the second reading and adoption, and we will go to Mark Fagen. Oh, no, we will go to Assistant Planner Elms.
Yes.
Okay? I tried, Stacy. Didn't work. Yep? Let's try that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So just as the last reading, I need to recuse myself. I live within 500 feet of this particular subdivision, and I will turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the third public hearing that this matter's been through. Went through one public hearing at the Planning Commission a month or so ago, and it came to you at the last meeting as a public hearing item. This is the second reading and adoption of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Los Banos and the owners of the villages at Stone Creek 2A and 3. I have some, something up here on the screen to show you. That's a map of the project area. The, if you can make it out, the red line denotes what's known as the Stone Creek South Area Plan. That area plan is a master plan development within the city of Los Banos. It's in the southwest quadrant of the city. I'll give you some landmarks. Walmart is, let's see, if I can find, to your right and about halfway down is the Olivera Park, and also to the, to the north of that is the new junior high school site, and to the north of that is the old Lowe's building, Target, and Walmart. Chaco Boulevard is the street at the top of the screen. Pioneer, Pioneer Road is to the bottom of the screen, and I believe Ortega Lita is there towards the right of the screen. The area within the red is approximately 493 acres. That was annexed into the city about 12 years ago. As part of that annexation, there was a development agreement and a master plan, and that was what was known as a pre-annexation development agreement, which requires what are called second-tier development agreements for each development within that 493 acres. The specific property we're talking about tonight is this property here in, outlined in yellow. On the last map, it's kind of in the center of that. This is what's known as villages 2A and 3. It's a 79-acre piece of property within that 493 acres. Currently, as you can see, there are rooftops in that development. There's a total of 287 lots in that development. Of those 287 lots, 155 of them have been finalled, which means they are now legal lots and can be built on and sold. Those are the lots that are to the top of the screen, and those little tags you can see up there at the top of the screen on those lots are addresses, so anywhere we see an address, that, that indicates that it's a final lot, ready to be built on, ready to be sold. It's a legal lot. The portion of the property to the bottom of the screen that's still outlined in yellow, where you kind of see some streets and a couple cul-de-sacs, I think, those are still tentative map lots, so those lots have not been finalled, and they're not ready to be sold. Of the final map lots, 56, 56 of those lots currently have homes on them, and 99 are vacant, just vacant lots. I'm not aware of any building permits that have been pulled on those vacant lots as of, as of tonight. So, there is the development agreement before you tonight, which is a request from the developer to extend that development agreement five years, covers that property within the yellow boundaries. The purpose of the extension of the development agreement is to extend the life of the tentative map that covers that piece of property. The tentative map without the development agreement has a short life, sometimes three years. It can be extended one, one additional year. Because it's within a development agreement, though, by contract, the city can extend that tentative map for the length of the development agreement, in this case, 10 years, which is a benefit to the developer in that they don't have to develop all those lots within a short period of time. And in this case, because of the housing downturn, developer would not want to develop those lots right now, because there's no demand for, for building on those lots. So the main purpose for the request to extend the development agreement tonight is to extend the tentative map that covers that piece of property, because it's very expensive to develop a tentative map up to this point. So if you go ahead and approve the extension and adopt the ordinance, it will extend that tentative map for an additional five years. That map is due to, due to expire one year from, I believe it's July or June 15th of this year. So without the extension, the tentative map would expire within one year, which would put a lot of pressure on the developer to meet all of the conditions necessary to turn those lots that you see there into final map lots, which probably would not be in their best financial interest at this point in time. Staff has reviewed the development agreement. Development agreement as written 10 years ago is still applicable to what's going on in the city now, still protects the city's interests now, and it's the recommendation that we extend the development agreement additional five years to allow the developer time to develop those lots. As a, as a consideration for doing that, the developers agreed to more specific language on the lighting and landscaping districts, or district within that area that we spoke of last time, which would require those new final map lots to come into a lighting and landscaping district, paying their pro-rata share of the benefit they receive from that lighting and landscaping district. That's a big benefit to the city, because some of the lots that are already in those districts are not paying their fair share because of financial considerations made at the time that those districts were formed. So we are asking, as a staff, that you approve the extension and the amendment of the agreement with the additional language. The applicant is agreeable to that additional language. I don't see them here tonight. They were here at the last meeting and spoke in support of this request. Just as an aside, there's villages four, which is immediately to the west of this development. It's a much larger development, and they've already been through the Planning Commission for an extension of their development agreement, and you will be seeing that, I don't believe at the next meeting, but possibly the, the meeting after that with the same request. So if there's any questions, I can answer those right now.
Okay. One of the, one of the considerations in this, in this language, oh, I'm sorry. One of the considerations in this language is that when this property, property was annexed into the city, and I think it was in 2005, and so now it's, it's been 10 years, and we have to renew this development agreement, the, when the houses are built, they will pay, they will pay the current impact fees at the time they are built. So the impact fees 10 years ago were substantially lower than they are now, and, which amounts to about $25,000 per home. And that's, those are just the fees for the city of Los Banos. The school district fees are separate. There are impact fees, and then there are developer fees. Developer fees are applied to the, to the school district-
Developer fees are applied to the, to the school district, and impact fees are applied for the city, what impact these houses have on the city itself. So again, they will be paying the current impact fees when those houses are built, and if they're not built for five years, whatever the impact fee is at that time, then they will pay that. Okay, are there any questions regarding Mr. Vaughn's presentation before I call for a vote?
We need to open the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing is submitted, yeah. Okay. At this time, if there are no questions from council, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 1127. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance number 1127? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on ordinance number 1127, bring it back to council level. And we have two actions tonight for the second reading and the adoption. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1127.
Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Lewis, second by Mr. Freya, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1127. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1127 as submitted.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Lewis, second by Mr. Freya, to adopt ordinance number 1127 as previously read. And we need a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Correa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Walta?
Yes. All right. Let's go on to B, public hearing. To receive public comment and to discuss the submittal of an application in response to the 2015 State Community Block Grant, CDBG Notice of Funding Availability Through NOFA, N-O-F-A. B1, City Council Resolution Number 5650, approving an application for funding and execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto of the 2015 allocation of the state CDBG funds, or program. Okay, and we're gonna go to whom? Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, or excuse me, City Council. I need to remember what body I'm speaking in front of. Okay, so I have a PowerPoint presentation for you, and so tonight we're talking about the 2015 CDBG program, NOFA. So what is NOFA and CDBG? Going right into that.
Thank you.
So, um...
Too many acronyms.
It is a lot of acronyms. So, what, what it is, it's the Department of Housing and Community Development provides a notice of funding availability, and that's what NOFA stands for. The funding is allocated to the state from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is also known as HUD. And this year in 2015, it was approximately $24,980, excuse me, $24,983,999 that was made available in federal community development grant, CDBG funding for 2015. So NOFA, the intent of NOFA is to benefit low and moderate income Californians, and the type of particular benefits that can be provided are for business assistance, micro enterprise, housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, housing acquisition projects, public infrastructure projects, public facility projects, public service programs, and planning and technical assistance grants. Basically, only certain entities are eligible to apply for the CDBG NOFA, and this would only be for non-entitlement jurisdictions. And to be a non-entitlement jurisdiction, you'd have to have a city with a population under 50,000, which, that qualifies Los Banos, or a county with a population under 200,000, which qualifies Merced County, and not currently a party to an urban county agreement, which we do not have, and that is not eligible to participate in the HUD-administered CDBG entitlement program. So those particular cities that are given an entitlement every single year, they're granted an entitlement, they would not be able to apply for the NOFA. It's only those cities that meet those criteria. So for instance, the city of Merced, the city of Fresno, those are entitlement cities, and they cannot participate in this NOFA program. So just to give you a little bit of basics of what NOFA is, it's planning grants that awards limits to $2 million in total each year, and we are limited to three activities. You have to meet national objectives, and the first is that it needs to benefit low-income persons or households, and there's four objectives in order to meet that option. It would need to eliminate slum or blight, and there's two objectives to meet that. Or, it can be an urgent need, and it's not used in the NOFA, it's not actually, you don't need to apply for NOFA for this, but there's an urgent need handled in real time. And so CDBG, the state, will help with this, and this is, for instance, earthquakes or natural disasters. So the low-income objective, the criteria to meet that is that you have to have an area benefit of 51% threshold, and what that means is you have to have a low-income area. Your entire city has to be 51% low moderate income. The city of Los Banos does not meet that objective. We have areas of town which meet that threshold, but our entire city incorporated city limits does not meet that. We're at, I believe, a little less than 47% low mod income. We need to have limited clientele, so this could be for specific projects, and for instance, like a senior project for low-income seniors, that would meet a limited clientele. Or it could be low-income households, so these would be for, say, like a first-time homebuyer type grant, or rehab type grant, where they would, each household would need to income verify that they are low-income, and it would need to directly benefit the house or the households. And then the last one is that jobs for low-income persons, and this would be for economic development projects, and these are that the employees are the benefit. So the slum blight objective, there's two sub-objectives that can qualify for this. You have to have a slum blight area, or you have to have a slum blight spot. What a slum blight spot means is that, say, you had a dilapidated building that was condemned, and you needed to clean it up, needed funding to rehab it, you could, that could qualify under slum blight objective, but it needed to be site-specific. So, public facilities activities. What's awarded, it's a maximum award of 1.5 million. What qualifies for this is acquisition, new construction or rehabilitation of buildings. It must support eligible CDBG public service activities, for example, a food bank or a fire station. In the city, we were looking at this, we were looking at this for a permanent supportive housing project. The council, back in December of 2014, gave staff direction to start a search for an eight-to-10 unit apartment complex for permanent supportive housing for the homeless. And through this process, we went through this process based on the direction of the council, and in January 2015, we did send out letters to brokers in town requesting information on any available eight-to-10 unit complex. And out of all the letters that we received, we also sent it to the real estate agents in town who had business licenses in our system, and out of all the letters that we had sent out, we received two leads, and, which unfortunately did not meet our specifications. One of the leads was for duplexes, which would not meet the criteria for a multifamily unit complex for permanent supportive housing, and the other complex was too large. It had 16 units, and we were really ideally looking for eight-to-10, that's what would be manageable for a site. And also, within the criteria of the grant, we're only awarded so much money. As you saw for public facilities, it's 1.5, but that also includes rehab. So a lot of these facilities that we do have available in town, they are quite old, and would need considerable amount of rehab to get them in a, in a position where we could use them for permanent supportive housing. Then in February of 2015, the Community and Economic Development Department, so myself and Sandra, we canvassed the low-mod neighborhoods and identified 18 complexes that would be possibly suitable for permanent supportive housing. So with that list of 18 properties, in February, we contacted the individual property owners, inquiring if they would be willing to partner with the city to participate in CDBG. Out of that, the city successfully scheduled walkthroughs with three property owners. So we looked at their multifamily dwelling units, and out of those three property owners, we did find one property that we were able to identify that met the criteria for CDBG. It actually was a 10-unit complex, and it would be feasible for rehab for supportive housing. So it, it met our objectives, it was in a low-mod income area, and it was next to services that are ideal for this type of facility. So then we talked to the seller, and they provided us with an asking price, and unfortunately, they bought this particular complex at the peak of the market in 2006, so prior to the crash, and paid top dollar for this particular apartment complex. So we were, then in March, we did a, an appraisal, we did receive an appraisal, and the appraisal came under $400,000 lower than the seller's asking price. Now, for CDBG, we would need to justify to the state, why would we, we'd be asking for less, or excuse me, more than what the appraisal would come under. Now, we could have justification for, say, maybe $50,000, and it would be a stretch, even saying $100,000 to the state. This would be using taxpayers' money essentially to that seller. We wouldn't be able to justify this large of a stretch, a $400,000 gap. A smaller stretch would, a smaller gap would have been feasible because we have nothing on the market existing currently right now. But 400,000, that was, we did talk to CDBG staff, and they had advised us that that would not be feasible for them to award us a grant with such large gap. So with that, staff did have, had to eliminate that activity from our application this year. So what we are focusing on is public services activities, and this would be a maximum award of $500,000, and the funding for operating costs, including labor, supplies, material, et cetera. So it needs to be for a public service, and an example of this would be employment training. Duplicate side. So our 2015 application for public services, we are asking for $300,000, and this would be for general administration as well, for $22,500. So our total price for this public service application would be for 300, 200, 322,500, and that would be adding the grant amount and the general administration amount. And this would fund a contract code enforcement officer. It would include their salary and overhead cost, property inspections, follow-up actions, enforcement of the municipal code, and then would also include the preparation of an RFP, Request for Proposal, to procure outside agency. So what this means is that we'd have to go out to an open bid, out to the public, to any consultant that provides this type of servants of a code, code enforcement officer to be able to apply for this particular activity. So we do need to focus on a low-mod area in order to meet the national objective with CDBG. Our low-mod area has been identified in this red outlined area for you in this aerial. It is bounded by Pacheco, so it goes, it's just north of Pacheco. It is east of Badger Flat Road. It is south of Wilmot and H Street, and it is east of Mercy Springs Road. So this particular code enforcement officer, should we be awarded this particular grant, would need to focus in this particular area. So we'd need to meet this national objective, it'd have to keep in this low-mod area. So public participation, we did do a public hearing on March 2nd, 2015. This was held at the community center, and Ashley was there from Habitat for Humanity, and so we went through basically a general PowerPoint of, of this presentation, and we talked about the city's goals and objectives, and really what the city saw as priorities. It was a permanent supportive housing, where, or what we had discussed, public service, code enforcement, we do need a bit of help in that area, and as the city has identified, a code enforcement is being one of their number-one priorities. And then also, just as being a common request from the public was some first-time homebuyer type funding, and the city evaluated as, from a staff perspective, at this point, what we would be able, what capacity would, we would be able to administer those particular types of activities. The first-time homebuyer type activity, we just don't have the staff right now to be able to support the monitoring that's required for those particular types of grants. They require self-certification of each particular homeowner, and essentially, the city is the bank, and we're the loan officers, we're the underwriters, so we're having to do credit score checks, and we're just, we're essentially the bank, and the Community and Economic Development Department does consist of just two people, and we work very closely with the finance department in these particular programs, and unfortunately, the staff, we don't have it to support a program like that at this time. Code enforcement, under public services, we would have the capacity to do, as we would procure an outside agency under contract to help us through this process. And then the public facility, as I explained, we eliminated that as we weren't able to find a suitable site, this particular go-around. So, a public hearing is tonight on April 1st, and this particular public hearing is really for the city council to give us an approval to apply for this 2015 application. And with that, CDBG does have some requirements. One is that if the audience, possible, they could sign in, there's a sign-in sheet at the back table, and they, they would like the audience to sign in, if possible, just to say that you were here and you heard this particular presentation, and were given the opportunity to speak. Also, I do need to read into the record, this is a new requirement of CDBG, I do have to read, so bear with me, the public hearing notice into the record. So it says, "Notice is hereby given that the city of Los Banos will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, April 1st, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of City Hall located at 520 J Street, Los Banos, California, in order to discuss the submittal of an application in response to the 2015 State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Notice of Funding Availability, NOFA, and to solicit citizen input." The city of Los Banos is applying for a grant in the amount of $300,000, and the approval to expend approximately $55,000 in existing or anticipated program income under the NOFA for the following eligible activities, $300,000 for public services. The purpose of this public hearing is to give citizens an opportunity to make their comments known on the proposed activity and application. If you require special accommodations to participate in the public hearing, please contact the Community and Economic Development Department. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to the city of Los Banos Community and Economic Development Department at 520 J Street, or you may telephone the Community and Economic Development Department. In addition, information is available for review at City Hall during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The city of Los Banos promotes fair housing and makes all of its programs available to low and moderate income families, regardless of age, race, color, religion, sex, national origin, sexual preference, marital status, or handicap, from the city of Los Banos." So that conclude, well, I have actually one more slide for you. It's basically just our recommendation, and staff at this time is requesting that the city council adopt resolution number 56, excuse me, I can't see that far, 5650, approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement for the 2015 allocation of the state CDBG program. And I'm gonna turn it over to Steve.
I want to thank Stacy and Sandra Benetti, who spent a lot of...
I want to thank Stacy and Sandra Benetti, who spent a lot of time on this in January and February. They did contact every broker in town a couple of times. They did go out and they identified 18 buildings. They contacted all of them. They were pulling me out of my office on a regular basis, at a moment's notice, to go look at these facilities. We actually found a perfect building in the right location. You could not have asked for a better facility. Great property owner, willing seller, he just paid too much at the peak of the market. So what we have to do now, in his specific case, is wait till the market catches up to the actual value of the property. He's ready to sell.
He is.
But that could take a while. So what we're going to do, while we're disappointed that we're not able to do this project now, we're going to put it on hold for about six months, put it on the back burner, and then kind of maybe in the early fall, reheat this thing, go back out to the brokers, see if there's an 8- to 10-unit complex, contact this gentleman again, and we might get lucky. We might have to wait a year or two, but eventually, you know, we'll find an 8- to 10-unit complex, and we'll be able to move this project forward. We just don't have the staff time to continue working on it every day, and there is an application period every April. So if we went out and found the perfect building in June, we'd have to ask that property owner to wait, and that's really not fair to the property owner. So when we say we're going to come back later in the year and reheat this thing, not that we don't have enough to do, it's just, we don't have the time, and it's not fair to the property owner to ask them to wait eight or nine months to sell their property. So outstanding effort, just found the right one, too. Just didn't happen. So she spent a lot of time on it. It's not in the staff report, but we wanted to bring it up tonight to show you this, we just didn't forget this, it just didn't happen. But we are pursuing code enforcement, and we will hear in August.
Yes.
Is that fair statement?
Should be July, August.
There you go. Thank you.
So we're not limited, so because we weren't able to apply, we can apply?
Correct.
In April.
Yes, we will apply in April for code enforcement, for $300,000 plus $22,500, I believe, administrative.
Yes.
So yes, we're going to apply for $322.
But we can apply again?
In the future.
For the apartment complex?
Next year.
Good.
Every year.
All right. Let's, Stonegrove, do you have a question before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, just a quick question. The cap on the three activities for the total of the $2 million, that's per year?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
If you, if you take the, we had kind of earmarked $1,005,000 for the housing project, and about $300,000 plus for the code enforcement, 1.8, so that's how we got to the $2 million. So you take out the 1.5, we're down to a much smaller figure.
Yes.
All right. If there are no other questions, I would like to open the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 5650, or anyone who wishes to speak. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 5650, and I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd also like to thank staff for the enormous amount of time that you spent trying to find housing complexes for the City of Los Banos. Next year is another opportunity, and maybe the funding will go up and allow us to be able to afford to buy the complex that's before us. I'm happy that we're able to apply for this grant regarding code enforcement, because it is an area that we need help desperately for here in Los Banos. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 5650 as submitted.
Okay. Mr. Furia.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Furia, to adopt Resolution Number 5650 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Jeff?
I just want to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Stacy, really quick, the $300,000, that covers, that's for multiple years, correct?
It is. We're earmarking that for three years.
Three years.
And we can dispense those funds down, essentially $100,000 a year, and then we're allowed 7.5% for general administration. That's what gets us to the $22,000.
Okay. So it's, I think it's a great step in the right direction, and I know that we all sit up here and we talk a lot about code enforcement, and to be able to get an opportunity to help fund that, and not just for one year, for three years, I really feel like we can make a difference with it, so, thank you.
Mrs. Lewis, why don't you restate your motion?
Yes. Sorry. Okay. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 5650 as submitted.
Mr. Furia.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Furia, to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5650 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to 7th C Public Hearing, to receive public comment and to consider the General Plan Amendment Number 2015-01, Zone Change Number 2015-01, and Tentative Parcel Map Number 201501 for Habitat for Humanity, Westside Merced County Incorporated, for the rezone of three parcels currently zoned, Low Density Residential R1 to Medium Density Residential R2, with the remainder of 3,300 square-foot parcel to Highway Commercial 8C for the project site located at 537, 543, and 547 M Street. Assessors' parcel number 026-044-012, and 013, and 014. And we will go to Assistant Planner Elms. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight's proposal consists of a general plan amendment, and this would be to redesignate land uses from low-density to medium-density residential, and then it would consist of a remainder portion of 3,300 square feet for low-density residential to commercial. And then it would also consist of a zone change. This would be to rezone property from R1 to R2, which is low-density to medium-density residential, and then that remainder portion of that 3,300 square foot from R1, which is low-density, to highway commercial. The Planning Commission did review this particular application on March 11, 2015, and recommended approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change to the city council. Also that night, they did approve a tentative map for the subdivision of the three parcels into five. It's technically four with a remainder. So this is the city's zoning map, and the areas that are in yellow are low-density residential. The property that we're discussing tonight, 537, 543, and 547 M Street, are outlined in black, which is a little difficult to see on the screens, but those are just east, excuse me, just west of the Bellotti property, or what was Los Banos Motors, as some of you may remember. So what is yellow is low-density residential. What is red is zoned highway commercial, and the areas in blue are mixed-use, which is a zoning designation for a downtown area that allows residential and commercial uses The environmental analysis on this project, it is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15332, in that it is an infill development project. Just to give you a setting of where this particular property is, the existing setting of the neighborhood, there are existing three parcels there currently, and there's two existing dwelling units. That's 537 and 547 M Street, and the most eastern parcel abuts commercial property, as I had stated, with the Bellotti property. And the southern boundary is bounded by the alley, which runs from between 4th Street, actually, and 6th Street. So the existing setting, there are R1 zoning, that's what this particular block is zoned as currently, and this particular zoning already allows for second dwelling units. And it's basically gives it the nature of a medium-density neighborhood with these particular second units. This is an allowance in our R1 zoning, was actually a criteria that was put in there from the state of California that did require that local jurisdictions allow second units in their low-density residential zoning districts. But you do need to meet a criteria, it's between 400 and 1,200 square feet, you are allowed to have a second dwelling unit. And much of the existing neighborhood, as I stated, on M Street already has existing second units. There are eight, and this particular aerial highlights the eight just on M Street that have those second units. So the point of this is that it's really highlighting that this particular neighborhood is, it already has the characteristics of a medium-density neighborhood with multiple dwelling units on the parcels. Going on, so the compatibility with adjacent uses, the existing neighborhood consists of old township lots. And so what those are, old lots that are 50 feet wide. Our city standard is now 60 feet wide. These old township lots, these were divided up back in the '50s before the city really had any zoning standards or any regulations, and so these old particular parts of town do have these old township lots that are non-conforming. They're pre-existing non-conforming, they don't meet our zoning standards because they don't meet the WITH criteria. And so the pre-existing non-conforming doesn't meet any of our standards. The neighborhood consists of about 5,000 square-foot lots. This is the existing neighborhood, and our municipal code, as I said, does require 6,000 square-foot lots. So what's being proposed is to rehab the two existing units and to create conforming medium-density parcels, and they're also proposing two new units, which would be single-family units, which would be consistent with the existing neighborhood. This is a parcel, excuse me, it's a picture of a project that Habitat for Humanity did. And this is another, this one is on, I want to say it's First in G, Ashley, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was a rehab, that Habitat, so new, new construction. So this is an example, just of the product that Habitat for Humanity does. So this is an existing residence on Los Banos, it's First in G Street, and this was a new construction. This is also new construction as well. Also new construction, is this one on Colorado? The next one, no, this was Colorado.
The first one was Colorado. This one is.
So there's, just to give you just a glimpse of the product that Habitat for Humanity does in Los Banos, they do a good job. And the goal of this particular proposal tonight is that they are giving homeownership. Currently, right now, they would only be able to provide homeownership for three families. With this general plan amendment and zone change to medium-density, they would be able to provide homeownership for four families. Studies show that homeownership improves test scores, excuse me, in schools. People take pride in their property, take ownership, and it improves the neighborhoods. So Habitat does a good job, and staff does support this project. And so public comment, a public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos Enterprise on March 20, 2015, and notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project site, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. As well as just to let you know, with the Planning Commission, no comments were also received during that particular public hearing as well from the neighborhood. So staff's recommendation at this time is that the city council have a motion of intent to adopt Resolution Number 5651, approving general plan amendment 2015-01, would waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance by title to rezone the properties, and then motion to continue the public hearing to April 15, 2015. That concludes my staff report. Ashley Williams is here, as well as Ned Ryan from Habitat for Humanity, to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Why don't we, did you want to speak?
She said it fairly well, I think.
Okay. All right.
I, I'm Ned Ryan from Habitat for Humanity, and appreciate being here. Stacy did a good job of presenting what we are proposing here, and I don't think I need to make any additional statement. However, we want to be here to answer any questions of the council.
Do you have any questions, council members? Mr. Silveira.
Ned, I see that we're going to zone a partial, a portion of it as highway commercial. What are you guys planning on doing with that?
Actually, that will remain with the existing owner. They have a metal building on that parcel, or on that part of the parcel, and the idea was for them to retain ownership of that building for their own use, and so we could rehab the dwelling on the front part of the property. So we would essentially buy the new, smaller lot with the dwelling. They would retain the metal building on the remainder parcel, the 3,300 square feet.
Very good. I just, I just was curious, I saw that part there.
No.
Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ned. Now let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on City Council Resolution Intent to Adopt City Council Resolution Number 5651? Can I do both at the same time? Okay. And Ordinance Number 1128. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on either of those two items? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 5651 and Ordinance Number 1128. We have three actions. So the first one is City Council Resolution Number 5651, approving general plan amendment Number 2015-01 for property located at 537, 543, and 547 M Street. More specifically identified as assessors' parcel numbers 026, 044, 012, 013, and 014. So this is just a simple vote, and Mr. Silveira?
Motion of intent.
Yeah, motion of intent to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5651 as previously stated.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by Silveira, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5651, motion of intent to adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Now let's go on to Ordinance Number 1128, amending the official zoning map by rezoning property located 537, 543, and 547 M Street, from low-density residential R1 to medium-density residential R2, and a remainder 3,300 square-foot parcel to highway commercial HC. Okay, Mr. Silveira.
This is a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1128 as previously stated.
Mrs. Lewis.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1128, and, okay, motion to waive the first reading, 1128. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 1128 as previously stated.
Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion for the introduction of Ordinance Number 1128, Mr. Silveira, and second by Mrs. Lewis, and we need a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Furia?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Palota?
Yes. Thank you. Kind of excited about this project because, Ned and Ashley, because I guess about two years ago, a lady walked in the shop, and she says, "I have a lot." And I said, "What did you want to do with it?" And she said, "Well, I'd like to donate it." And then I told her, I says, "Well, I have the perfect person to give it to." And I'm glad that came to fruition, and it's going to work out well.
That sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Item 8, consideration of the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 5652, approval of noise variance permit Number 2015-01 to allow construction associated with the Los Banos courthouse to commence work at 5:30 a.m. Monday through Saturday at the location of 1159 G Street, assessors' parcel Number 02616100. at the location of 1159 G Street, assessors' parcel Number 026161007. And we'll go to Assistant Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my last presentation tonight.
Okay.
So, the proposal before you is a request for a noise variance, to start construction noise associated with the courthouse. This would be from May 1st to November 1st, 2015, and also April 1st to July 1st, 2016. And this would be from the hours of 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Currently, our municipal code does give, our noise ordinance does give an exemption for noise associated with construction after 7:00 a.m. So anything before that, the code does allow a remedy for a noise variance. The noise variance, actually, our municipal code allows variances, and the authority on those are actually the Planning Commission. This is the only variance within our municipal code that does require action be taken by the City Council. Our municipal code also requires that a public hearing be held at the Planning Commission level, but it does not require a public hearing to be held at the City Council level. But it does give authority to the City Council to either approve, modify, or deny the noise variance request. So, the particular request, the construction that's going to be associated with it, it will consist of a two-story tilt-up building. It's going to be structural, still, and extensive site work will be included in the construction. It will include concrete and formwork. This particular request came about to mitigate heat exhaustion during the summer months. So the applicant, which is Swinerton Builders, the construction company, did ask that, in order to help mitigate heated exhaustion for their crews, that they would be able to start during the summer months particularly, earlier in the morning at 5:30 a.m. OSHA now does have also new requirements that do require particular businesses, construction crews to mitigate for heat exhaustion. So that would just be helping them follow those OSHA requirements. They would be starting construction mid-May, and they're anticipating to have an enclosed building by mid-October. So then their work from October to essentially April into April 2016 would then be located inside the building. And then they would be finishing sidewalk improvements from April 1st, 2016, to about July of 2016, when the project would be finished. This is the location of the project, it's highlighted for you in yellow here. It is located at 1159 G Street. So it is west of Mercy Springs Road, and it is south of G Street. It's also north of Pacheco Boulevard and north of the rail trail. So according to our municipal code, the City Council has to make six findings. The first finding is that the uses of property within the area affected by the noise. So, we need to make a finding based on that. And the uses that surround this particular piece of property, that's highlighted for you in yellow, is the project site. What's highlighted for you in red is actually a 100-foot buffer all around the project site, and to give you an idea of what 100 feet actually means around that project site. What's highlighted for you in green are sensitive uses, which are residential uses in close proximity. On G Street, there are primarily commercial uses. There's California dairies directly across the street, just north of this project site. There's a residential use that's highlighted in green. It's approximately between 30 to 40 feet, literally, across the street to this project site. And then there are other commercial uses of a recycling facility, Hepner's, which is a welding shop, and All American, or, excuse me, yeah, All American Hot Rod, Rick Silva's business. For some reason, I don't think I'm saying his name particularly, right? Yeah, that's right, okay. I was second guessing myself, I'm sorry. There's also residential uses on the northern end of this, but they are facing F Street. They are more than 300 feet away from the project site, and then there are residential uses that are highlighted along Mercy Springs that are going north and south. Those are, the closest one is over 400 feet away. So the second finding is that factors related to initiating and completing all remedial work. The conditions of approval have been incorporated to mitigate any of these particular effects of the planning, and I'm going to go on in my next slide to also discuss the particular conditions of approval that the Planning Commission added, and also in coordination with staff's conditions. And then, the third finding is that the age and useful life of the existing noise source. So this particular noise source would be temporary and only during the construction of the Los Banos courthouse project, so it won't last forever. The requested variance is for the time period of May 1st, 2015, to November 1st, 2015, and then also to pick up again April 1st, 2016, to July 1st, 2016, when the project will be completed. Finding number four is that the general public interest, welfare and safety. So the City Council has to find, make a finding that it's in the general public interest, welfare and safety. And so this particular noise variance would be temporary, as I stated before, in duration. It would not pose a serious risk to the public interest, welfare and safety of the community. It would reduce the risk of construction crews from being delayed due to heat exhaustion. It would allow them to meet their OSHA requirements. And, also, Ned, it's not included in this, but the end result is a courthouse for the city of Los Banos, a new courthouse. Finding number five is that the existence of the noise source would be prior to December 4th, 1987, this is not applicable to this particular project. And then the last one is that the existence of the noise source prior to the existence of affected noise-sensitive receivers, also not applicable to this particular project. So, the Planning Commission, they did review this particular item on March 11th, 2015, and suggested six additional conditions of approval. The first one is that there would be no pile-driving noise to occur from 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. And this was using, and there's a table for you included in your staff report, of typical construction equipment. And this was at a level of about 50 feet, and it used, it lists all the particular decibel levels. And so, pile-driving, they determined, was a very loud source, and due to the close proximity to the residential unit that is directly across the street from this particular project, they did ask that those particular noise sources associated with pile-driving not occur during those sensitive hours. That no rock-crushing noise would occur from 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. In this particular project site, what existed there previously were old packing sheds. There's a lot of concrete foundations out there, there will be concrete that needs to be crushed. But the Planning Commission felt that it was necessary to place a condition that would require that none of that particular noise would happen until after 7:00 a.m. The next one was that the variance would not be permitted for Sundays. So Sundays would need to follow the municipal code's regular hours of operation, which actually start at 8:00 a.m. And then, four, that the decibel level shall not exceed 85 decibels over a 15-minute period from 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. So if they're going to be doing any construction noise that's higher than 85, they need to wait till 7:00 a.m. And that the applicant shall pay the cost to measure the sound they're creating if it is requested. So if, say, a resident asks that the noise be measured, they would need to provide that at their cost, the construction company would need to provide that at their cost, to ensure that they're not exceeding that 85 decibel level. And then the last one is that an additional sound barrier shall be provided for the eastern boundary. Now, in the existing conditions, staff had put that there would be a noise barrier on the northern side along G Street, and this was to help mitigate any noise being traveled over to that sensitive residential use directly across the street. This was a mitigation requirement of, actually, of Walmart, and it came from their CEQA document, and worked very effectively for those neighborhoods just south of Walmart. So we felt that this was a reasonable condition to ask. And then the Planning Commission also felt that it was necessary to put that on the eastern boundary, which would be, help mitigate the noise a lot for those residential uses along Mercy Springs. Public comment. So a public hearing is not required, according to the municipal code, for a noise variance at the City Council level. But however, staff did publish a public notice in the Los Banos Enterprise on March 20th, just to notify the public that we would be discussing this particular item here tonight before the City Council. And then we also mailed out public notices to the property owners within a 300-foot radius of the project site, to give them an opportunity to come and hear the discussion here. And then, as of today's date, no comments have been received. No comments were also received during the Planning Commission level of this particular item. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 5652, approving noise variance permit Number 2015-01. And that concludes my staff report. And Victor is here from Swinerton Builders. Victor's right there, in case you have any questions, as well as myself.
Victor, you're aware of all the additional requirements?
I guess, I, um...
I got it.
I spoke with Stacy. We would like to, to possibly do away with the eastern sound barrier, just because the homes are so far away, it's not necessary. This is also a lead project, which, a lot of, lot of receiving those credits is cost-based, so adding that additional cost will probably chances in obtaining that lead certificate for the project. On the, on the northern side, I know they, they add to that as well. I would like to, maybe, maybe, well, ultimately, we would like to not have to do that either, but if required, then maybe we could look at something else as, as to maybe not put something permanently on the fence, but some movable partitions where if we have some loud, loud activities, we can station those as needed.
So the only thing you're questioning at this time is the sound barrier, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's go on to other City Council member questions first. Mr. Silveira, you first.
Stacy, I guess, my question is, is, had they not required or asked for a variance to start at 5:30 a.m. versus the, the regular start time, my ordinance is 7 o'clock, correct?
Yes.
Had they not asked for this variance, would we still be asking them to impose the sound barriers?
There would be no variance requirement and no restrictions.
Okay. I, you know, I, I get, I get the possibility of the one there on the northern side with the house there. There's, I know the area very well, there's, there's literally, there is one residential house right there. I, I have to say that I agree with, what was your name again?
Victor.
I have to agree with Victor. I don't, I don't really see the need for one on the eastern side of the property. And then the other part of it is, is, I think, and I don't know if this may be me just speaking out loud, but, you know, as far as you start enclosing, and I remember those sound barriers that they had at Walmart, they're huge. And, you start enclosing this thing, I mean, there's going to be a lot of construction going on there for PD, but, you know, going and making sure that, maybe you guys do, will have security on site, I don't know. And then, I'm, I'm pretty proud of this project, it's been a long time in making, and I know that our friends over at the, in the court system fought very hard for us to get this project, and I'm excited about it, a lot of people are excited that it's coming here. And, man, we put up those walls, we're not going to get to see this progress that we've been waiting for, for the last, I don't know, four or five years. So, I myself don't necessarily think that, I, I think that maybe there on, on G Street, if there was some way that you guys, a temporary one, I could live with that, when you know you're going to be doing those type of activities that are going to make a bunch of noise. But I don't really see a need for one on the east side, but that is just my opinion.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Stacy, what materials did Walmart use for mitigating their sound wall?
They used plywood, and their particular condition, and that's actually what we modeled, this particular condition. And so it's Condition 12, under Exhibit C of your staff report. It's a requirement of a minimum, minimum eight-foot high temporary noise attenuation barrier shall be placed along the length of the northern and eastern edge of construction activities for the duration of construction. The noise barrier shall consist of a material and provides a sound transmission class rating of at least STC 27, and shall be approved by the Community Development Director or designee. So that's the particular condition that we did put on Walmart, and what they had was plywood, it was eight feet tall.
Okay. And, I'm not sure if you have this answer, but based on the number of feet from this project to the residents on Mercy Springs, and the one resident on G Street, what is it in comparison to what Walmart's footage was to the residents at the southern side of their project?
Walmart was actually more, and also had an existing sound wall along the residences on Prairie Springs. So there was an existing sound wall there that is about eight feet tall, that are the backyards of those residents, and then Walmart was required on their side of Prairie Springs to put up their own noise barrier, plywood of eight feet tall. So this is closer, because it's 30 to 40 feet, whereas those residents are further away on Prairie Springs than this particular one on, that's only 30 to 40 feet away.
And, and just for the sake of our audience, could you explain what piling, pile-driving is, so that they will know?
And probably Palmer, one of my planning commissioners, can explain this better than I can, or Mr. Vaughn, because I am not a construction worker, or somebody who's, who works out in the field. Mr. Vaughn, can you actually help me out with this?
We'll ask, we'll ask Mark Fagen to explain this.
No? Can you save, can you save me?
Yeah. No. You see, a lot of pile-driving at overpasses. It's concrete beams that are actually hammered in with large pneumatic drills, presses, very loud. So it's, and they are, I, I don't know, is there concrete driving in, is there pile-driving in this building?
Would you have it, so, so mute point, it won't be?
I wouldn't believe there would be any need for pile-driving with the soil in this type of building at all.
I think the commission was concerned because of the two-story building, and it was going to be built out of steel, that it would consist of this. Unfortunately, there wasn't a representative from Swinerton at the Planning Commission, so there wasn't anybody to speak up on their behalf regarding these particular conditions. And the Planning Commission wanted to ensure that the residents were not going to be affected.
And the reason why I ask these questions is because where Walmart is located, it's not a heavy-traffic area, it's mostly residential. Where Mercy Springs is located, not only do you, I mean, the residents may be a little bit further away, but you may have people who are working at night and sleeping during the day. You also have the, the traffic of commercial trucks up and down Mercy Springs, and that culminated with the noise that's going on with the construction of the court site might be a little bit more than what people are able to bear. People don't have a tendency to, to know what they're getting into until it happens, and then the complaints start coming in. So, that's my concern behind what the Planning Commission was trying to mitigate here in the early morning hours. If there's going to be this excessive amount of noise of 85 decibels or more, there may be some concern about disturbing residents, disturbing young people who are getting their sleep and needing to prepare for school. So, that, that would be my big concern about the project. I'm really happy about the courthouse coming, but I'm also concerned about the residents who live in the surrounding area, that they're not being disturbed beyond what our code will allow them. And that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Thank you. I too am very excited about the, the beginning of the construction of this courthouse project. And I have a question about how the, how it came up to, to add the condition of the eastern sound barrier. Is it, the northern sound barrier was already planned?
Yes, that was a condition from staff.
And then the Planning Commission added the condition of the eastern?
Yes.
Was there, and you said there was no, no response from the residents? That was...
No, we did not receive any responses from the residents, nor were any residents from that particular neighborhood represented at...
At the meeting?
Public hearing. The pla-
The Planning Commission did unanimously feel that despite the noise already existing on the highway that early in the morning, that traffic is not as intense as later on in the morning, and felt that at 5:30, it's still pretty quiet, and that those residents should be respected during those early hours of the morning.
But there were no concerns from those residents submitted to you?
No.
Or to the city?
You know, just for clarification, that is kind of a high density, it's our three area-
It is.
And it's all apartments, and there are hundreds of apartment units that are there, and so I don't even know if they, if the notices even filter down to the residents themselves.
Now, that's outside the 300-foot radius, so they were not, on Mercy Springs, they were not notified, but G Street was notified, and some particular, particularly were on F Street. So we're within our 300-foot radius.
Yeah. But that's on the eastern end, is that correct?
It's on the northern side.
The northern, the northern side, but then they're requesting a sound barrier in the eastern end, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and the apartments are on the eastern-
On the eastern side, yes. And it was for those sensitive businesses there.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Freya?
The only condition Swinerton is, is questioning is the eastern sound barrier, is that correct?
Both, both.
Both, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, I, you know, that area, I travel that road early morning, and, you know, during tomato season, there's truck traffic all day, all day through there, starting, you know, tomato season goes the 4th of July till sometime in October, there's, there's a lot of traffic through there. And I just, and I mean, like, I get why they're doing it, they're trying to, it's for the health and safety of their employees to start at 5:30 in the morning versus starting at 7:00. And because they made this, you know, they asked for this request to start at 5:30, and I mean, let's be, they're going to get there at 5:30, and they're going to start some work at 5:30, but it's dark out, and so they're probably going to, you know, it's to get some of those things done that they can get done. So to, for them, trying to think ahead a little bit, because it does get hot here, and they're going to be building right in the hottest months of the year, they're, we're asking them to put all these extra restrictions on them. And so, listen, if there's not any other further comments, I'd like to, I mean, I guess I'd need to ask the city attorney, can I make a motion with some changes, or is it approved?
Modify?
You can modify any of the conditions that are on Exhibit C, and they're all incorporated in there?
Yes, they are. They're from, well, 12, it starts at 12, with the inclusion of the eastern boundary, and then from 13 to 17, those are all from the Planning Commission.
Yes, you can modify or add or subtract.
Okay, and I would like to make-
Let me find out if there are any more questions, sir, some will just do that. Any, yes, Mr. Freya?
How long is it, by the sounds of things, the sound barrier is, is a two-story sound barrier that goes up pretty quickly, is that correct?
Well, no, I personally never had to, had to do anything like that, but it, from, from what, talking about the plywood, it'd be attaching plywood to a permanent, well, permanent for the duration of the construction project fence, so that's-
Be something that your company could do quickly, a day or two?
I don't know what the footages are.
It's eight feet tall, and just using Walmart-
Lengthwise.
Oh, lengthwise?
Yeah.
It's maybe 100 feet or so, maybe a little bit more than that, 150 feet, using Walmart as an example, and I know that's completely different construction crews, but they were able to construct theirs in about a day, a day and a half.
Okay. Because, I'm kind of with Mr. Silveira on this, we've worked awfully hard and waited a long time for this, and if, if it can go up that quickly, if we got some complaints, then we could readdress it. That's my opinion. I don't like, I don't like overruling our Planning Commission, but just thinking about limitations on construction, the state kept this, when they cut a whole bunch of other things, and they kept this one. And so, if we can, and you were mentioning something about your meeting a certain LEED.
It's a, we're trying to obtain, I believe, a Silver rating.
Mm-hmm. And so, to me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem doing away with the wall conditions, and then if we got some complaints, we could bring it back to council and address it.
Mr. Silveira, with that in mind, if you- You know, I should ask, we should clarify this, so what we approve is what we approve, or Bill, can we come back and modify this? You should get that question answered, Mr. Freya.
You would want to have a specific condition as to, under what circumstances could it come back for a modification of that particular condition? So, I mean, is it one complaint, is it two complaints, is it 10 complaints, is it, what is it that you're going to do?
I mean, I'd like us to be very specific if that's what you're going to. Mr. Freya, did you want to?
I would suggest that the Planning Director be able to bring it back to you, subject to any complaints that she gets, and let her filter those complaints before you're modifying this every two weeks, because someone raises their hand and says, oh, I can't, you know, so I would have it filter through the, if you're going to do that, that way, I would have it filter through the Planning Department, and I would specify exactly what it is that you want to modify.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, really quickly-
Yes, let me, let me finish with Mr. Freya, and I'll be happy to go back to you. And I have Mrs. Lewis next, and then we'll do that. Okay?
Mr. Vaughn's recommendation is, sounds like a good one. Now, would, Mr. Vaughn, would we, would you recommend that a certain, that staff would have received a certain number of complaints, or it would be at staff's discretion whether to bring it back?
Yeah, I don't think you can anticipate that, and so I would leave it at the discretion of staff to either bring it back or not bring it back.
Okay, very good.
Now, if I can just jump in, there is a condition, number four, that the contractor may be directed to install temporary or portable noise barriers around stationary construction noise sources, should a specific noise impact complaint occur. So that would be based on complaints, then that they would be required, and that, that's already an existing condition.
Okay.
And you could modify that if you, if you needed to change that to your specifications.
Okay, thank you.
But then it would still, it would still then filter through you, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, one of the ways you could do it is you could have the Community Development Director make the determination that the barrier needs to go up, subject to the contractor being able to appeal it to you. So that's one way to shortcut the steps, if they realize that they are making a lot of noise out there, and it is bothering a number of people, she can make that determination, subject to them appealing to you, something like that.
Okay. So, Mr. Vaughn's idea sounds like a good one.
Okay.
As usual.
All right, let me go to Mrs. Lewis, and I think Mr. Silveira wants to speak.
Thank you. I will agree to that. My first concern is for the residents, and I'm, again, I'm very happy that we're getting this state courthouse, but as a councilperson for the City of Los Bannas and the people who live here, I have to be concerned about them, and their welfare, and their safety, and their health. And so, if we get a significant number of complaints, or whatever complaints our Planning Department determines is significant for it to come back to Planning Commission, to city council, then I'm okay with that. But I don't want to leave our residents unprotected, to just say, it's too bad, it's past, and we're not going to do anything about it.
So what you could do is just change Item 12 to say, at the direction of the Planning Department, or the Economic Develop, what is it now?
Community and economic-
Community and Economic Development Department, a minimum eight-foot-high temporary noise barrier shall be constructed. And with that, giving them the opportunity to contest that in front of you if they want to.
Okay. I'm going to try and follow procedure here, because Mr. Silveira was going to make a motion, and let's see if we have a second, and let's see where that goes first, and then we'll, we'll proceed if needed. Okay, Mr. Silveira?
First, I have a comment, then I will proceed to my motion-
Okay.
Is, I feel like there's a lot of, and again, and this is, I'm not trying to go against our Planning Commission either, but I feel like there's a lot of redundancy here, especially for the fact that if they didn't ask to start an hour and a half earlier, they wouldn't be going through any of this, there wouldn't be a requirement to put up a wall. But I understand some of the concerns of the rest of my council, and, and I express those, you know, some of those same concerns, but, you know, we have no pile driving noise, no rock crushing noise, the sound, sound levels will not exceed 85 decibels. So I feel like those protections are in place, that the noises aren't going to be an issue. So, but with that being said, I will, I would like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5652, approval of the noise variance permit number 2501, to allow construction associated with the Los Bannas courthouse to commence at 5:30 a.m. Monday through Saturday at the location of 1159 G Street, APN number 026161007, with a change to Item 12 of the Exhibit C, to state at the discretion, or at, discretion or direction?
Direction.
At the direction of the Community and Economic Development Department, with a caveat on there that the folks at-
Swinerton.
Swinerton Buildings can appeal any one of those decisions to the council.
Or any one of them, or just the?
That one.
That one?
That specific one of the eight-foot wall.
Yeah. And that's, it's the only one that they could appeal?
That's number 12, yes.
Okay. All right, let's go to, I'll ask for a second, and then I'll talk about discussion before we vote, okay? Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
All right, I have a motion as read on Item Number 5652, on amending Item 12, is it?
12.
Okay. And is there any discussion before we vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Oh, wait a minute, did you say no?
No, I said aye.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, okay, we have, Mrs. Lewis, did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just want to be sure. All right, motion carried, 5-0, no opposition. Thank you, good discussion. Okay. All right, let's go on to Item 9, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 5653, designating the City of Los Bannas fire stations as a safe surrender baby sites. And we will go to our fire chief, Mr. Morrison.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The resolution that I've brought before you tonight is, is kind of a difficult topic to discuss, however, it presents a very real challenge to today's society, and it needs to be addressed. But over the years, there have been a number of newborn children that, for one reason or the other, the parents have found themselves in a position to where they are unable or unwilling to carry, care for the child, and have resorted to illegal and improper ways of discarding the child that could lead to injury or even death. What you have before you tonight is a project called the Safe Surrender Baby Site, and what it does is, basically designates our local fire stations, the one on 7th Street, and the one on West Ice Street, as a safe location to bring a child and surrender it without any fear of criminal action being taken against the parents. So we've prepared a slideshow for you, it's a very quick one, but it highlights the meat and potatoes of the resolution. So the purpose of this is, is basically to keep, allow the parents to surrender their child in a safe atmosphere without resorting to measures that could harm the baby or even cause death to the child. The original Safe Surrender Baby Law was implemented in 2001. In 2005, Governor Schwarzenegger made the law a permanent law, and it came into permanent effect in 2006. In 2010, Assembly Bill 1048 then allowed local agencies, through the proper approval, to adopt safe surrender sites within their organizations. Statewide statistics regarding this law is California and 49 other states have such laws in place. From January of 2001 to December of 2014, there have been 685 newborns that have been safely surrendered in California, while another 164 infants have been found alive following their illegal abandonment. In 2014, there was a total of 73 infants that were safely surrendered in the state of California, at either fire stations or designated hospitals. Under the Safe Surrender Law, a parent or a person with lawful custody can safely surrender a baby confidentially and without fear of prosecutions within 72 hours of the birth of the child. The law requires that the baby be taken to a public or private hospital, a designated fire station, or other safe surrender site, no questions will be asked of the parent when they surrender the child. The law provides a safe and an alternative way for the parents to surrender the child in a lawful manner. At the time of the surrender, there's a bracelet that, we have prepared a packet that will be mounted near the front entrance to both of our fire stations. In that packet, there's a number of documents, but also in the packet is a duplicate bracelet set, if you will, and we place one of the bracelets on the child, and then we give the other bracelet to the guardian that's surrendering the child. A parent or a person with lawful custody has up to 14 days from the time that they surrender the child to be able to reclaim the child. What happens to the baby? The baby will be examined and given medical treatment by the firefighters that receive the child, and they will also contact the ambulance for our area to respond to the stations, and that child with our firefighter in attendance will be transported to Memorial Hospital in Los Bannas. From that point, after the child's cared for, it will be placed in a foster or pre-adoptive home by the welfare agency. So what happens to the parents? Parents who safely surrender their baby may leave the designated surrender site without fear of arrest or prosecution for child abandonment. This process does not require us to notify law enforcement, that's why the process works. There, there may be a situation to where the mother or the guardian that has possession of the child does not feel comfortable in the presence of law enforcement for one reason or the other, and in this case, it gives them a way of safely surrendering the child without fear of, of any legal action being taken against them. Their identity of the guardian is, will remain confidential, and they have a little bit of comfort knowing that their child has been left in, in the safety of the firefighters. If they're in the 14-day cooling off period, the parent decides that they will, they want to reclaim the baby, they can take the identifying bracelet that they were given to the hospital, and the staff at the hospital will provide them information on how to go about to recover the child. Does a parent have to give any information to the Los Bannas Fire Department personnel? No, they do not have to identify themselves, they do not have to give any type of past medical history of the child. It's basically, if the child is healthy and does not appear to be abused, we can accept the child without any questions asked. However, near the front of the station, as I advised, we have these packets, and inside this packet, there's written procedures. We will be doing a number of trainings with our firefighters to make sure that we do this process correctly, but there will be instructions in the packet as well for them to follow. This luckily is something that we don't expect to do very often, and so the step-by-step procedures are there for, for any time, day or night. The coated ankle bracelets are also located within the packet that will be located by the front door. There's a medical health questionnaire and a pre-addressed postage-paid stamped envelope in the packet as well. If the guardian who is surrendering the child would like to take the time, at the time that they surrender it, to fill out the medical health questionnaire, we will- they surrender it, to fill out the medical health questionnaire, we will help them do that. If they do not want to do that, if they're in a hurry to leave the building, we will offer the questionnaire to them with the envelope, so that if at a later time they feel that they want to fill it out, they can mail it directly to the correct authorities to provide any medical background for the child that may assist in caring for that child. Also in that packet, there's fact sheets for the guardian who surrendered the child to review how the process works, and it also gives them their alternatives to recover the child within that fourteen-day period. All of the information that is provided in the packet is printed in both English and Spanish for any of our residents to be able to follow the instruction. It is up to the guardian who's surrendering the child to provide any of that information. They legally do not have a responsibility to tell us anything. We have also located in this packet a few minor items to take care of maybe newborn children that have not been properly cared for, that may have umbilical cord still attached that we can take the proper marital care to make sure that the child is cared for appropriately. So, the conclusion of my presentation is what we want to do and what has been successful throughout the United States is to provide a safe environment for the infant and the surrendering party to surrender that child. Ensure that the medical needs of the infant are met appropriately. All of our firefighters at all of our fire stations are EMT certified and have been properly trained in attending to newborn children. That the child is accurately labeled, and documentation's critical for proper identification. So, what I'm asking you tonight is to adopt this resolution that will allow us to enact basically an existing law, a very good law, that is in place to save maybe our most innocent Couple of things that I would like to do is I want to say a couple of thank-yous. This project, I had, it was one of the projects that, when I took over as chief, it was one of the ones on the top of my list. And so, our part-time fire clerk, Rochelle McCarthy, who is here tonight, I mentioned it to her, and she championed the cause and made it her own, and she did a very good job at putting this project together and preparing all the necessary documentations and the pamphlets and the slideshow that you've seen tonight. Sign Solutions in Los Banas, Susan Hanson, in order to properly identify our facilities, I went down to Public Works, thank you, Mark, and I stole a couple of the parking signs. Sign Solutions then took them down there and printed on the necessary information so that we could properly identify the front of our buildings as being safe surrender site. This is the universal symbol for this project. And then Memorial Hospital of Los Banas is the one that really helped Rochelle in putting everything together to make sure that we followed all of the state laws to provide this service to our community. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you stump me, I will refer to Rochelle, she came down tonight, she is the subject expert on it, but I'm willing to take any questions if you'd like. If not, then I would hope that you could pass this resolution tonight.
Tim, I was just talking to the city manager, and it says if a child appears over seventy-two hours old and/or neglected, receiving personnel will immediately notify the Los Banas Police Department and Child Welfare Services. We won't turn anyone away.
No, we won't.
Yes.
No, if they're there to surrender a child, if it's healthy and it's between newborn and three days old, then they can leave without any problems. If the child appears to have been abused or neglected and older than three days old, then law enforcement will be notified.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to Mr. Silvera.
Just one quick question for you, Tim. So, we're passing, well, we should be passing this resolution tonight, and I'm looking down the road, if we ever build a new fire station, this covers us, all of our fire stations, it covers the city and all of its fire stations.
Yeah, as City Council, what you're adopting tonight is the two existing stations and any additional ones that we add in the future. I might add that the Merced County Board of Supervisors approved this, I think, in two thousand and ten. Merced City approved it in two thousand and twelve. So, we will basically now have every fire station in Merced County approved safe surrender sites.
Absolutely, I think it's, yeah, it's maybe a little overdue even, but much needed. And the numbers are there in your presentation, so, thank you.
Question, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Tim, first, I want to thank you and your staff and Los Banas Hospital for bringing this forward, even though we're a little bit behind the eight ball. Thank you for making it a priority in your tenure here, and this is really important for these little precious lives that can be surrendered without anyone feeling that they're going to go to jail or suffer a consequence when they are not able to take care of the child. The question that I have is, after the seventy-two hours, do we have a way of informing anyone who still wants to surrender a child where they need to go, such as, you know, social services or child welfare? Is there another place to send them if they still can't take care of a child after seventy-two hours?
Yeah, there's information in the packet to address that, that we can give them. However, if they insist on surrendering the child right then and there, we are going to take the child. We will not turn somebody away with a baby in their hands that do not appear to want to care for the child.
All right. And then after the fourteen days, if a parent, say on the fifteenth or sixteenth day or any day thereafter, shows up and decides that they want to keep their child and they would like to get the child back into the family unit, is there something in the packet that tells them what to do?
I do not believe it does, does it, Rochelle? Social services? Yeah, it will go through social services. There isn't anything in the packet, but I think that it would be simple to address that and put it in the packet, just maybe add a little bit of information in there. We could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Stonegrove?
Thank you. I want to thank Chief Marison for bringing this item forward, and thank you Rochelle for your work on this. It is a very, very important item, and it's hard to imagine the circumstances that would bring someone to do this, but you saw from the presentation that it does happen, and it's important to have safe sites where people can surrender babies. So, if there's no further discussion, I would move for the adoption of City Council Resolution Number Five-Six Five-Three Designating the City of Los Banas Fire Stations as Safe Surrender Baby Sites.
Mrs. Silvera?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Stonegrove, second by Silvera, to adopt City Council Resolution Number Five-Six Five-Three as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to Item Ten, Advisement of Public Notices, and tonight we have two reports. Stacy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the first is a conditional use permit for La Oleja Family Care. They're requesting to have a home occupation business license with employees at twenty-three forty-nine South Fallbrook. This would be for non-medical care at patients' houses, so the employees would never be at the home occupation residence at twenty-three forty-nine. They'd be reporting to the patients' houses, and this type of non-medical care is primarily for the elderly or for the disabled that need either companionship or some assisted help at home. And then the second item is a proposed ordinance revision for special events ordinance. We have the opportunity now with events coming up and with coordination with our police department to clean up this particular ordinance. It will address special events like pumpkin patches, Christmas tree sales, Valentine's Day flower-type sales, balloons, novelties like that. Right now, the code doesn't have a, really, an appropriate mechanism to treat that, an appropriate policy, so we will be putting that together before the planning commission, and it will ultimately come before the city council.
I'm glad to see that come forward, because it's, sometimes people just want to set up on a street corner and sell things, and that's where code enforcement's going to come in.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, let's go on to City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. DeLa Cruz and the students, she did an outstanding job, we didn't lose anybody. It's been two hours, and you have great stamina. I am Steve Carrigan, I'm the city manager, which means I'm employee number one, and if you don't know what a city manager does, it's pretty simple. I really don't do anything, but I'm responsible for everything. That's the best way to describe it. And because you came down, well, let me back up a little bit. You saw tonight, it was pretty rough, I'll admit. I mean, Stacy does a great job, really, you do, but you made code enforcement sound kind of interesting, so points for you tonight. But about ninety percent of what we do is pretty rough, but the ten percent that's left over, that's what gets all of us to come back. There are some really cool days at City Hall, with a lot of pretty average mundane days that just blend into each other. I'll give you an example, last year, a guy brought a mortar, a live round, and he put it on the front lawn at City Hall. And I was sitting with the fire chief, waiting for the police chief, and the fire chief's radio went off and it said, "Bomb at City Hall." And that will get you to sit up straight. And bomb squad showed up, took it away, five hours later, everything was okay. But, the point is, our guys were ready. Police was ready, fire was ready, ambulance was ready, dispatch was ready, and they handled it. We've had a couple of suicide standoffs, really impressive to see how that all unfolds, and the training and the coordination between the departments. Tim just gave a presentation on safe surrender, and I hope to God he never calls me, but I'm telling you, the whole time he's giving this presentation, I'm just setting my watch, it's going to happen. He's going to call me someday and say, "Stevie, might want to come over, I'm holding a baby." And what happens next? I mean, so a lot of the things we do is just preparation for the next event. Where I'm headed with all this is, we need police officers and firefighters and information technology people. If you're interested in numbers, maybe finance is your thing. We need city employees, so think about city government as an option down the road. One of the things we are going to do, if you say, "I want to be a police officer, I want to be a firefighter," we're going to vet you, we're going to put you through an application process, and eventually, some investigator's going to go visit with Mr. DeLa Cruz and say, "Tell me about this guy," or "Tell me about this girl." We go all the way that far back to find out, we're going to check on your character, what you did, who you ran with, all of those things. So, if you're listening to me, great, pay attention, and if you're not, that's okay too. What I would like to do with Mr. DeLa Cruz, because you stayed the whole night and really you didn't throw anything, I would love to come to your class and answer questions, tell you what the best part of my job is, the worst part, what it's really like working with all these people without them listening. And if you just pick the day and the time, I would be more than happy to come down, and if you want me to bring a police chief, fire chief, or a council member, you just tell me when you want to come down, we'll come down. But thank you for coming down and really staying with it, I do appreciate, I know everyone up here does. So, thank you.
Tell me what day it comes, I'll come and listen.
It'd be more interesting if he did. That's all right.
You know, I'm just thinking, years ago, years ago, we used to have stand-ins for high school students who would assume the roles of council members and mayor and the city manager. And we haven't done that in, I don't know how long. So, maybe, Jeff, if you could find out if there's interest for us, for the two high schools, and then what we could do is, we could, I don't know how the process would be handled at both high schools, but we could have two nights where we could have counterparts, and they could run the meeting, the students could run the meeting.
That'd be great.
Okay? So, okay, so would you kind of keep me informed, let me know what's going on, and then we'll set something? Do we need to agenda that at some time?
No.
Okay, good.
I got it.
All right, you got it.
The ball.
Good, thank you, done deal. All right. All right, let's go on to City Council Member Reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. I don't have a lot for tonight, but while Eric's here, I just want to thank Allied for hosting the cleanup day last weekend, my family took advantage of that, and I know there was a long line, but it appeared, I didn't go down there, my husband did, but he said it was very, very efficient, so thank you guys for doing that, I know that it's very well attended. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Freya?
Remind everybody, April eighteenth, the Chamber Commerce Street Fair downtown, lots of vendors, pony rides, a lot of fun and games, fun food. On the same day, the Open House of Habitat for Humanity, it runs ten to two, five-thirty-seven M Street. The dedication will be one o'clock, Habitat does tremendous work for people, people put sweat equity into a house, they help build the house that they then are able to purchase and own that they otherwise couldn't do. So, it's a wonderful program, and we're very pleased to see it moving forward. So, two events that way, you can be at the street fair, pop in for the open house, and dedication, and come back and have some more food. And finally, Easter, happy Easter, have a wonderful Easter weekend and spring break.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Last year, I had an opportunity to work at the project at five-five-five-three-three M Street Habitat for Humanities, and it's right next door to the three projects that are coming up that we voted on tonight. So, it is a very worthwhile project, worthwhile program, and as women get together, we have thousands of ideas as to how a house is going to be reconstructed on the inside and decorated, and so I'm sure Habitat for Humanities came up with a very viable idea as to how to go about this and make it cost-effective for the new residents that are going to attend, I mean, going to live in that house. Also, the open house, the ribbon-cutting for Sandoval's bail bondsman that occurred this past week, I met with them and I went to see their business. One of the things that they started just recently was a girls' soccer team. We don't have girls' soccer here in Los Banas. So, if you have children, I think it's like ages up to twelve years old and probably seven to twelve, that are interested in playing soccer, please contact the Sandovals, they're right here next door to City Hall, and they'll be more than happy to assist you in getting your girls started in playing soccer. Just for the students that are here tonight, I saw a lot of faces light up when we talked about having you here to sit with the council members, the mayor, and acting in our stead. Just remember, this body that sits up here is a legislative body. Our city manager is the overseer of all the staff that are hired by the City of Los Banas. The city council does not do that. All the items that you heard us speak about tonight were legislative actions that needed to be taken for various projects, and perhaps there'll be some changes in policy and changes in our ordinances that we may be hearing in the future. So, those are the things that your council does, and it's like your state legislators and like people that are elected at the federal level, those are the same things that they do. They're legislative bodies who make laws and to help govern the areas, the United States, the state of California, whatever state you're in, whatever county you're in, and whatever local government you live in. So, some of you out there tonight may become the next city council people when you become of age. So, think about it. Think about what you want your city to look like when you grow up. Think about what amenities you want, and think about what you can do to make a change for the city that you live in. So, when some of you get that opportunity to sit up here, those are thoughts that you can have in mind about what you would like to do. Not everybody is going to work in public service jobs, I did, but I also became a legislator, and so some of you can do that out there. And I, some of these faces I recognize from a couple of weeks ago, and a lot of you have some good ideas, so it's good to think about what public service you'd like to go into if that's the route that you choose in life. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silvera?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Fairtime is right around the corner, it's April twenty-ninth through May the third. There's discount admission tickets, there's some of the family packs, or the spring break packs, there's discount admission with ride tickets, the carnival wristbands. spring break packs, there's discount admission with ride tickets, the carnival wristbands. Those all go on sale April 7th. I misspoke at the last council meeting, I said April 1st, but it's April 7th, so, and those will be on sale and as long as supplies last, or until 5 o'clock on April the 28th. And you can buy those at the fair office. So there's some really good deals. You want to get out, there's, the, the spring break pack is a real popular one, it's, it's two adult one-day passes, two youth one-day passes, and two ride wristbands for $59.95. Also, just in the grandstands, Wednesday night, something new this year, they're having a hay squeeze contest. If you're not familiar with what a hay squeeze is, it's basically, in layman's terms, it's a forklift that moves hay bales around. So, it's, it's, it's pretty neat. I, I deal with hay squeezes all the time, I have cousins that drive them, and they're, it's actually a pretty, and then they're going to have like a hay stealing contest that's going to be along with that.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm calling you out on this one. It's, it's a hay squeeze?
Hay squeeze. So it's, it's a forklift that picks up hay. It's, you see, if you drive around Los Banos, you see them around here.
Really?
So the race is, is how fast, how fast you can load the hay on the truck and take it off the truck. It starts out in a stack, how fast you can get it off the truck.
I'm learning, I'm learning this stuff.
Mr. Carrigan's going to be there Wednesday night at the fair, so he can see what a hay squeeze is.
I will be there.
It's a country thing.
It, it's a morning, but I think it would be, it would be cool for all you guys to go take a look at it, and Thursday night's a rodeo, Friday night is destruction derby, Saturday night is the destruction derby with cars, pickups, and then the last event for the night is the RV destruction derby, which is always an interesting time.
That's awesome.
And then our, our staple every year is Sunday is the four-by-four pools. So, that's right around the corner, so I, I hope to see all of you guys out there. The next thing, I'm going to keep reminding everybody from now until it passes, but on Monday, June the 8th, is Donate for Debbie. It's a blood drive. Debbie is a very good friend of mine, good friend of my family that we lost to cancer a few years back. This is the fourth annual Donate for Debbie. If you can give blood, you know, blood is, is the gift of life, right? And so, if you can make it out there, and it's, and it's a pretty, you know, it's just not your normal go give blood, blood event. They feed you, they have a nice spread that you get to eat afterwards. Paul, that's at the fairgrounds in the O'Banion Building, Paul, Debbie's husband, is an almond processor, and there's all kinds of goodies, almonds and stuff out there, so that is, again, Monday, June 8th. The next thing is, is this is a, a council member request, and, and as, as a request for a, a future agenda item, and so I know that we will have to discuss it at the next meeting, but, you know, this drought situation that we're in is not going away, and, and if you listen to some of the studies, they say this is the new normal. And so, one of the things that I've been thinking about, and I, I would love to see if there's a majority of council that'll indulge to have staff expend some time on looking at, you know, construction is starting to pick up in Los Banos, and on, and part of our ordinances is that your front yard, upon final occupancy, the front yard has to be landscaped. What I want to look into is, is I don't know that we're ready to go to what they call dryscaping, which is like they do in Arizona, Phoenix, where it's basically rocks and cactus, I like to say, but definitely start looking into drought tolerant landscaping, make that an, make that a, a, an option. And I know that today Governor Brown came out and he, he's, they're requiring some of this stuff, and I just, I think it's, it's every little bit helped. So, just think about this for a second, you know, I've seen some studies that say that 60% of all the water's used in a home, it goes to landscaping. There's, there's definitely options out there that will help you to do a better job with that. It's discussed with the Public Works Director earlier today. A 10-minute cycle, you're, you're, you get more bang for your buck with your water if you irrigate in two five-minute cycles, so you irrigate five minutes and then, you know, three or four hours later, five hours, give it another five-minute cycle, then a 10-minute cycle, because the water will actually go down and not, you know, you run it for 10 minutes and the water runs out on the street, and the street doesn't get any benefit from putting water on it. So, think about just ideas of how you could, the governor today has asked that every resident in the State of California cut back their water use by 25%. So think about that when you're brushing your teeth. And I'm guilty sometimes too, and I catch myself, when you're brushing your teeth, shut the water off, and then when you're done, turn it on and rinse, you know? There's little things that each and every, and you guys are young ones in here, and you've got family members at home, pass the information along. Each and every one of us can do a little bit to help get that number, and here's, here's the kicker to it, is now the governor's office wants to see enforcement. So, as a heads up, if you're a, a, a poor water user in the City of Los Banos and you've been warned, we're done with the warnings. The state now is asking us to send them a report of how many people have we cited, and if, if our number's not below that 25%, we haven't cited anybody, they're going to say, "Well, what are you guys doing over there?" So, the water police are going to be out, and it's, it's drastic times, guys, because I'm going to tell you, I'm living and breathing this water deal every day, being in, being a derriman and being farming and having a lot of friends that are in farming, and if we think it's bad now, and I said this last year, I didn't think it could get any worse, but we made it through last year, and I don't know how well we're going to make it through this year, because the snowpack today, when they went and did the measurement, where they normally go and do it, there should be five feet of snow, there was nothing, it was dirt. It was literally, there was dirt, so there was no snowpack. So, snowpack is what gives us our water in the summer months, right? The rain filled up the reservoirs, but the snow is what melts and keeps those reservoirs full to be able to feed water to this valley, Southern California. So, it's not just farmers, it's, there's, there's literally, there's cities that rely 100% on surface water, they don't have groundwater. So when I say surface water, the water has to come down a canal, it has to be treated, and that's how the, the residents of that community drink their water. There's, there's not going to be any water for them to drink. So it's getting really serious, so take that home with you guys and, and share that with your family. We all, if we all individually do a little bit, it will help the greater cause. So back to my council member request to be put on the, the future agendas, if there's a council majority to support having staff look into some, maybe some, some ordinance changes, look at what we can do to, and I'm, I'm not ready to force anything on anybody yet, but I want to be able to give them options, especially with this new construction that's going on, give them the options and, and stress to them of the importance of some dryscaping and, and, or not dryscaping, but just some drought tolerant landscaping, make that an option for folks that are water weary, so, that's all I have for night, thank you. Happy Easter to everyone.
Okay, thank you. The, a couple of issues, things that are coming up. A resident came to me and said, "You know, there are a lot of people that have taken great pride in, in their homes," and, and they said that they've taken a, a home that was basically an ice fort, and they've made it into something that really looks nice by not only fixing up the home, they fixed up the, the front yard, they've made it look good, and, and through, it's through a lot of effort and sweat equity, they've taken houses that, that basically didn't look good, and now they've made them look pretty good, and they've repped very well. And so, the resident suggested that, says, "Why don't you give out some awards for, for these people that have put this, this extraordinary effort into some of the homes?" And I says, "You know, that's a great idea." So, I've been working on this, I talked to the City Manager, and it's just going to be a little certificate of appreciation in bringing these individuals here to the council and, and thanking them for, for turning something that was not so good-looking to something that is good-looking now. And, and I've, I've selected a, a family of, of, of a home, and they will be here on the 15th, and, and I'm hoping that this will become kind of a, a tradition to where I can, and get input from the council members, and if we have homes that have gone above and beyond, that you can recommend them to me, and we can give them a certificate of appreciation for what they've done. And, and I'm very proud of this family, and, and when I approached them, I said, "Hi, I'm the mayor of Los Banos," and they're like, "Well, what did I do wrong?" And I said, "You didn't do anything wrong, I'm here just to compliment you on what you've done with your house." And, and so, and, and actually, it was a rental house, and, and these people have taken great pride in it. So, so I would like to give them a certificate of appreciation at the next meeting in April, and we can, we can, we can talk about this. Also, Eric, thank you for the, for the cleanup. You know, it, it disposes of a lot of trash around town that basically might have been dumped in, in a vacant lot, or, or, or someplace that, that could create another ice fort around town. So, so this is a good deal, it happens twice a year, and, and saves people a lot of money for the, for the amount of, of, of trash it would have been, it had to pay for if we went to the landfill and, by the truckload. And that brings up a situation that I'd like to talk to you about. We have a, a waste site called Billy Wright Road, and it's out here on the west end of town, about six, seven miles out of town, and City Manager Carrigan and I were listening to some reports the other day that, at one time, we had to go to recycling because we were filling up our landfills very quickly. But now that's not the case with the recession and, and lessening of home building. When we were building 400 homes a year, there was a lot of disposal, but now that we haven't built any homes in the last four or five years, and now we may build 50 to 75 this year, it is picking up a little bit. But the, but the waste sites are not at their capacity that they should be in order to be profitable. And we have two in the county, we have one on Highway 59 out of Merced, and we have the one here in Los Banos. So, I have asked the Director of Merced County Association of Governments to come on May 6th and give us a report on the wellness of our landfills. Now, this doesn't seem like a very exciting topic, but it is because it talks about the future of Los Banos, and everyone has to have a place to dispose of their trash. And it's important that we have these landfills, because if these landfills are not available, we have to go to other measures, and then the expense is, is tremendous. The Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA, basically is not sanctioning new landfills. So, we have what we have, and how can we keep them going? So, we need to talk about the welfare of this landfill and the economic viability. So that will happen on May 6th, and then we can, we can talk about what the structure's going to be in the future for the, the dumping of our waste. So I hope those of you who are listening out there that, and on the internet, will come on May 6th and listen to these reports. So if you can, attend the Street Fair on April 18th. We have an open house for Habitat for Humanity, and girls, if you'd like to get involved, there's going to be a, a day just for women with Habitat for Humanity, and is there a number we can contact, I mean?
Ashley gave her number, it was 509...
9026.
Girls, if you're interested in coming that day and, and working with the, uh, Women and Construction Day, please, please contact Ashley at that number, and it'd probably, it'd be, just be good. So, so think about it. So with that, we are now going to go into closed session, and it's a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, agency-designated representatives, City Manager Carrigan, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Melanie, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Banos Police Officers Association, LBPOA, Los Banos Police Sergeants Association, LBPSA, Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, LBPDCSOA, and Los Banos Firefighters Association, LBFFA, and unrepresented miscellaneous employees. Item B, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, titled City Manager. And if there's anything to report, we will do so after we return from closed session. Thank you, and have a nice evening. Chaco, thank you for coming.